Six toes. The Youth Council is charged with reviewing, considering, discussing, disputing, debating, and advocating on such issues and matters affecting local government and Whitestown community with the members of the council and the Whitestown community determined to be important and appropriate, and we charge for the betterment of Whitestown and its youth. The Youth Council is encouraged to identify issues affecting Whitestown youth that should be considered by local government, seek and develop realistic and efficient solutions, having recommendations for consideration by the town council. The Youth Council shall report to the town council on its activities at least three times each term. Seven, effective taking disorder, and shall be in full force in effect from and after its passage adopted by the town council. Mr. President, I have a motion and we suspend the rules and have second reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen twenty one this evening.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. All right, ordinance is adopted, four to zero. Moving on to letter D and our new business, we have ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty two in front of us, which is a ordinance to create a neighborhood council that's going to add to the.
I will, um, just a little bit of history, I sat on the conor in Wilmington as the president of one of the neighborhoods in cities there, worked for, um, the, the, the reason for this would be the truly the unity of all of the neighborhoods as one Whitestown community. So you hear many times the word you live, I live in the walk of the networks, the word you live, I live in the most patches, love for it, the Whitestown will be first, the neighborhood will be second. What this does, it takes, uh, it takes rubber banders from each of our subdivision, puts them on one council to have one single voice to, to the town council. And what this, this neighborhood council would do basically is talk about things that are, um, uh, the things that have equal significance across the board in, in any neighborhood that we have. Pools, uh, the streets, the sidewalks, the AT ramps, the signage, um, lighting, uh, speeders to neighborhoods. I can go down the list of the things I have to deal with on a daily basis that I get from Facebook a lot. So what this will do is basically take, uh, all of those items, not necessarily away from staff, the staff will still be paying attention to the dealing with those, but the men of the council will then directly communicate with the town council, uh, via resolutions from this council on things that are important to the neighborhoods as a whole. Uh, now some neighborhoods will have different issues than others, uh, some neighborhoods' needs will be different than others, some neighborhoods' priorities will be different. I think what you're going to find out is that the majority of the issues the neighborhoods are dealing with are very nice to say. So this council does two things, unifies the neighborhoods number one, gives our citizens yet another opportunity to sit on a coordinated body where they can discuss issues of past resolutions with the pastors on as direct communication to the town council.
I think one of the positives of, uh, this ordinance that this commission presented is that with those Facebook groups they've been talking about, there aren't even those groups we have to petition access for. And oftentimes those neighborhood groups aren't seeing each other, they're not seeing conversations going on. This gives them an opportunity to gather together, face to face, person to person, discuss some of the issues, just find out just how similar some of the things they're dealing with ours, make a ton of common resolution, create a resolution, and then resolve, talk to us about it. So I think that's a great opportunity, uh, moving forward, so this is a very positive step I would give.
There are also some residents in some of our neighborhoods who have, uh, much of an identity crisis, uh, uh, that they really don't know where they are. Some of that has to be via the postal address history that we have, uh, postal districts that are chopped up in town. Um, I know that the Park Meadows has been very, uh, we, when we, when we talked with them via Facebook, there's a lot given, said, I didn't even know that I was in Whitestown. They learned that now, they learned that we're very responsive, it's been very good communicating, uh, and this, this will just help for them to understand, oh yeah, like our Whitestown, we're involved in our own town government, uh, we're excited about that, and, uh, we'll communicate with our town, our town government, uh, directly.
And also I know of a few, uh, several neighborhoods out here that are newly established, uh, such as Maple Grove, the building by Water Market, uh, Redwood, these are places that even existed a couple of years ago, whereas Walk of the Fields and Lanes and Torre and Eagle Park, those have been around for several years, so I think this is very positive break on the news. So thank you, Mr. President, for, for bringing this forward.
I did want to point out that I think we, uh, forgot to probably add in, um, rural, uh, merit. We did, we missed that.
Rural.
Am I missing, am I missing any of those? I know there's. The Handicap Society, the Handicap Society, we're adding them into the legislature. We'll think, think. We would, we would agree to that.
I'm just hoping that there's a recognition that neighborhoods can all be completely diverse as well.
Well, and, and this will be amended as neighborhoods get built and established as Westport Homes, that's not there yet. Um, if you notice, the ordinance doesn't recognize neighborhoods, there's traditional houses that are recognized, it's not completed. Once houses start to go under, residents start to build, and we'll come back, the staff will amend the ordinance to include those new subdivisions because I believe that Park Meadows is a normal, their house is going up in a little less probably, more considered than Park Meadows is anything, but it's going to have its name. Um, so we'll have to make amendments quite often, we'll be paying attention to it to bring those back to use as we can call members, representatives from those new neighborhoods as well.
In that, that work of Congress, the town council president, is you do.
Oh, that's right, we did that, and then we don't have to do yet, that's right, because we're so smart. And for our, for our, for our thinking, we don't have to do it, I just told you, we don't have to, the town council president. And I have some.
I love this, but my concern is that the neighborhood is very different from one area to another. I understand that people want to celebrate our things that are common and what we're doing, but I also don't want to lose some of the role that we still have within our community, um, or have people think that they have to become a subdivision or have, um, each of us stand within their area.
And this is by no means a challenging edge choice here at all.
Every neighborhood needs one, every one wants one. So this would make it serve to unify some of the things that you mentioned, but it could also serve as a, hey, this neighborhood needs this, this neighborhood needs that.
And we want to focus on positives and not on, and I mean, I was a celebrator personally that future town has, but also ways to bring a sense of the overall community.
Uh, I think we want to compare that to the council, so I think that, I mean, it's important for us to keep that in our, uh, when we remember that view of the board.
You don't thank me for this either, because although I talk a lot, I have Jennifer She-Tanya, she's done all that now, chicken scratch, and pretty much made what you see in front of you today as well.
So, I, I would entertain reading, uh, the first read by title.
Ordinance number two thousand sixteen dash twenty two, an ordinance establishing a neighborhood council for the town of Whitestown, Indiana. Mr. President, we would need to make adjustments to include some of the rural portions, ordinance language to the town council president, can make those amendments necessary, make it okay for us to spend the rules and adopt it tonight.
I would get adopted tonight, and, uh, Susan, uh, we're about clawing on, uh, making sure all the appropriate areas are appropriated for.
And I would move to suspend the rules without ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty one.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Rules are suspended.
Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty two, an ordinance establishing a neighborhood council for the town of Whitestown, Indiana. Mr. President, I would adopt the ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty two.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Rules are suspended.
Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty two, an ordinance establishing a neighborhood council for the town of Whitestown, Indiana. Mr. President, I would adopt the ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty two.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, four to zero. All right, moving on to letter E, uh, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty three, an ordinance adopting an internal control standard procedures, uh, will it, will it long do the first read, any explanation?
So I'm going to rewire your first order, two thousand sixteen dash twenty three, ordinance adopting internal control standards and procedures. This council, uh, a couple of months ago, passed a resolution asking myself, clerk treasurer, and the town manager, would comply with new sections of Indiana code requiring that after six thirty of this view, we would have internal control standards, after doing research and investigation, and a meeting between myself and clerk treasurer, myself and town manager, and their meetings thereafter, we came to the agreement that by adopting the standards laid out by the state board accounts, and by the town manager presenting the training by state board accounts, would be in compliance with the code. Additionally, we discussed that the standards for state board accounts were written as one size fits all, and we developed one size fits all meeting. And so the, the town manager and clerk treasurer will be continuing to work with the department to figure out what our internal policies and procedure will be to implement these standards, and that they will then keep written copies of those standards to state board accounts and come in on this board evidence. With the way that this is working, we'll look at the standards that are required by state board accounts, and allow the flexibility for staff to document their procedures and change them as necessary, remaining compliant, without having to come back for this council to get those approvals. And so that is why the town manager and clerk treasurer, I applaud to you for adoption tonight, in compliance with the code, fifteen days early. Awesome. Didn't cost time of, uh, excess that time, for those stories. So, Mr. President, it's already been cleared, we will suspend the rules without ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty three.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Rules are suspended.
Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty three, an ordinance adopting internal control standards and procedures. Mr. President, I would move to adopt the ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty three.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted. Thank you, guys, my bad.
Well, thank you so much, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dadman.
It was all Dad's and clerk treasurer.
Clerk treasurer. All right, next up, we have letter F, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty five. And is this one that only requires ordering?
Yes.
Before we try to do the second.
Right. The planning commission votes four to one on this, uh, favor. No, no. Oh, this is what? Oh, yes, never mind, it was four to zero.
Four to zero.
Yeah, that was, this is from, she, she got me on with those, it's a good thing, always get more around. It's, it's changing, we've done this so many times, it's kind of, right.
Who would entertain, uh, someone reading this by title?
Oh, right. Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty five, ordinance invented zoning merit within zoning ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana. Mr. President, I would move to adopt the ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty five.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, four to zero. All right, next up, we have letter G, resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty nine.
Resolution number two thousand sixteen dash twenty nine, resolution adopting a procurement card policy for the town of Whitestown.
Make a motion, adopt the resolution number two thousand sixteen dash twenty nine, resolution adopting a procurement card policy for the town of Whitestown.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Resolution is adopted, four to zero. Thank you. Next up, we have letter R, resolution two thousand sixteen dash third.
Oh boy. Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. President. Yes, you go, it's all.
Um, another, we're doing very well, I can't help but actually surprise at this point. Uh, anyway, the United States sees that there are buildings going up right and left. One of those buildings has been built, really builds spec, um, and now we have a proposed tenant, a tenant is a Fortune one hundred company. Ben from the EDC is here tonight, he did a very good job of communicating with me and our staff in this project, and then I communicated with the council. Um, I'm very excited about the project, uh, from economic development, which is my background. Uh, I think this is one of those that fits our goal for the town. It is distribution, but the wages are, um, much higher than your typical distribution wage, and I think that's because of the nature of the company, uh, and what they're dealing with, uh, and the fact that they're taking space, and all those buildings going up tells us a market, you build a Whitestown, you're going to fill a Whitestown. Um, and they're asking for a standard ten-year, uh, tax deduction, uh, for personal property. The personal property is quite extensive investment, uh, around two thousand six hundred, um, you don't see that very often, uh, it's Amazon-ish, um, in the investment. So I would recommend, um, as you're checking on the development staff as well, recommend that you approve, uh, this, this request for tax deduction for this very good company which is to be calling, uh, Whitestown.
Now, this will take up the entire Houston Tech Building, is that correct?
Uh, no, it will, yeah, it will, yeah, it will, it will take up this building.
And how much more inventory we have, uh, building?
Uh, probably nineteen's going up, and I'll have about a hundred and, if I remember right, around a hundred and ten thousand per feet left after Telon goes in. Um, I know that Lauren has been approached by, I think she's been approached by Duke, and they're talking about putting the building eight day up into the air, which is quite extensive. Um, GDI construction is talking about a seven hundred thousand, one million square foot. If you lose the whole, uh, square foot, uh, facility, uh, Ben, Ben now continues to put buildings up in Area Industrial Park, uh, I believe they're scheduled for, for one or not two more soon in the Whitestown Industrial Park, which is on the, I guess to be the north side, two sixty seven, the kind of the northwest-ish side, two sixty seven at that point. Uh, that potentially could have one point seven two eighths per foot ability, that's all been approved, developing lanes has just been approved, they're talking about only vertical areas as well. We're talking to this really companies, uh, right now, uh, as well, and Ben and his staff are talking, they're doing the same, so we're in a really hot period, I don't know, otherwise, uh, here in Whitestown.
Did this company ever tune us, they were going to, they were going to count, right?
Based on what you did tonight, hence the title incentive.
And, uh, so there's a lot of big buildings going ahead, and maybe this is about, about small buildings, or smaller.
Well, mine, I'm talking about small buildings, as we get south, we, and our conference is planning, basically set to build a lot of money, even more big block buildings as we go south. Um, the, the thing though is, is the council will build buildings, and we're out of the market to be a landlord, so the people that do build buildings and have the capital to do so, obviously, are still seeking the market, uh, the two hundred thousands, five and seven hundred thousand building is a good return investment for them, uh, so it's really hard to convince them that they're making a lot of money on the product that they're putting up, to put a different product up now. But that, as we said, uh, I think that we will start to see some fifty thousand, twenty five thousand per foot. Mine, I'm talking about, my white head, you can see, you know, I've had a really good long season conversation about the I sixty five corridor between Indianapolis Road and I sixty five becoming what we call a graduate park. Everybody wants a launch, we need to do a launch, everybody wants an incubator, but those companies have nowhere to go, and they're not incubating. So you can be a Z-works all you want to, but when, when you finally do a public, and you have to have twenty five thousand per feet, you gotta know where to go to Indianapolis Metro. No. But what I say is, let's Whitestown be that place. If you're ready to grow to second stage, or even first stage, you have a closet, this is the place that you can go, because we have the buildings to do it. So we're looking for a business partner right now, looking for a developer partner that will go in with the town, uh, partnership to build what you would call a graduate park, to have those ten dozens per feet to fifty dozens per foot glass type buildings that face the interstate, that would fill an inch in that product. For now, it's not being built because we're filling the blanks, so, it's a good question.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty nine, resolution of the town council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, for a reverse property tax deduction in Whitestown area number one, under Indiana code six dash one point one dash twelve point one, Mr. President, I would adopt the resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Say aye. All those opposed say no. Resolution is adopted, four to zero.
This must be the cast.
Yeah, I'm a little desperate.
Sure for advertising.
Up next is, uh, letter I, resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty one, resolution concerning policy, precedent of formal record requests and other legal process, other legal process on behalf of Whitestown.
I make a motion, we adopt resolution number two thousand sixteen dash thirty four, resolution concerning policy, precedent of formal record requests and other legal process on behalf of Whitestown.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Resolution is adopted, four to zero. All right, up next is letter J, resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty two. And, uh, first read, I'm going, are we all agreed? Sorry. Uh, resolution number two thousand sixteen dash thirty two, a resolution regarding broadband development for the town of Whitestown.
No, sir. Our relations are treating, right, are twenty five, they are standing there, they are treating plan, does not have added broadband, and we're paying quite a bit of money for a very poor product, so this is timely. Um, the state is way behind, um, is an economic development that, that it is, it's time that we get things stepped up in the state to, uh, make broadband one of those necessary utilities just like water, sewer, electricity. So thank you for this resolution.
Also, I would like to point out, um, the second, third, and fourth clauses, uh, we're asked clauses within the resolution are imperative to what we're doing here, they speak to the comprehensive plan that, you know, the officials, residents, and, uh, staffs, a year and a half later, and one of the things that we always came back around to is that broadband is going to be a decent construction, like tax is talking about for now and in the future, and moving forward on this, moving forward on another part of the conference, I think it's a great set for the council, and I think this is a great resolution to get this on path and forward, so thank you.
I would, uh. I would make a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand sixteen dash thirty two.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Resolution is adopted, four to zero. All right, up next, we have letter K, which is a consider request by Chief Dennis Anderson, uh, to fill his fat hole.
Counsel.
Chief, I know you had, we had some emails following that report today, but I, I didn't see all of those, so we can, uh, pay us.
As was to you, where, on April twenty eighth, we lost Sarko Babo to a serious medical condition that currently has him hospitalized, it's a syndrome called Guillain-Barré. It has a, uh, effect on the body where it basically takes over and causes total paralysis. The day he, Sarko Babo worked the day before, uh, on that night, I had to get up the next morning, stepped out of bed and felt a lot on his face. By the time he was transported to the hospital, um, mid-afternoon, we were notified, uh, he was paralyzed basically from the shoulders down. That has been a roller coaster ride for him since being admitted into the hospital, uh, he has since undergone a number of different procedures, um, there's no known cure for this, it's, it's a virus that the body has that, um, takes antibodies in the blood and programs them to attack bad cells like the flu and things along those lines, and when the body fights off the infection, it doesn't know to stop telling the antibodies to continue to attack, so it starts to attack the nerves. He's showing some great progress, I visited with him yesterday, I tried to get down to see him about Henry the other day, um, he has movement back in his right arm, he can lift it above his head, he's got movement back into his right hand, he can hold large objects, he can't, he doesn't have the motor functions yet to do small things, genetic nights, he can put a bag of M and Ms to his request, and he was able to, if I could put them in his hand, he could actually beat himself, which is a huge step over from just two days prior. Um, he has since today, he's been up on the side of his bed, going through about thirty minutes of, um, rehabilitation, uh, starting to see some tremors in his lower extremities, and also in his left hand. If you've read anything about the syndrome, um, it's literally all over the place as far as how it affects the human body and the recovery rate and recovery percentages. It can be anywhere from six months to seven years of recovery, it can be anywhere from fifty percent recovery of all motor functions to the high nineties, uh, and just anywhere in between, there's no rhyme or reason to how people recover from this syndrome. So needless to say, it's left a huge, not a weight in our hearts. It's left a huge weight in our, in our staff. And so, um, we have started the process, we've got all this paperwork done to get him along to, um, short term and long term visibility, uh, and exactly what that's going to play out to, yet we just really don't know. Um, but what I'm asking the council is to consider, um, allowing us to hire a replacement in that, in his slot, um, is, I'm relatively certain that we're not going to see him back this year, I pray that we'll see him in the early parts of next. So with that, with respect, we ask the council to consider, um, doing, uh, future appropriations for about thirty five thousand dollars, uh, to allow the police department to, uh, hire a replacement, uh, we're going through a selection process now, it should be wrapped up by the end of the month, and it will be an input process, we're in a position to be able to offer a, uh, eligibility list that we can make a tentative offer. I think first of all, I'm.
I think first of all, I, uh, let Sergeant Babo know that, I mean, he's in our, all of our thoughts to him, I mean, this is a horrible disease, but, but, I mean, what it does to a person, uh, you know, I, I can't, you know, I can't even begin to understand what he's going through right now, uh, it's just, it's horrible, and, uh, we want to have speedy recovery, so I can be back here, and, uh, so, doing his job as soon as he can, because, uh, you know, if it, or if it down, it's, it's, it's...
It, it's amazing with everything he's going through, uh, his first concern every time we get on the scene is how things are going to power things back here, that's what we must know about.
I hate to bother considering, um, this decision.
I, I don't even want to consider that to be a long-term, at, at this point in time, I want to, can't, I mean, he's been here as long as I've been here, uh, so long as...
Is that a serious, very, Sergeant?
It doesn't have to necessarily, I think that's something that we're going to talk about at the commission level, um, about how we handle a temporary supervisor, supervisory position, should this type of thing ever happen again, um, so this would just create a public safety officer's line, just go and do, and then just hire to backfill that staff, otherwise, kind of, we'll do it by overtime, just a matter of a few months.
Justice, further, Justice, position. We show gratitude and further back, though.
It, this will cover the benefits of the new officer, what's currently in the budget will take care of everything, Sergeant Babo, um, this will cover everything for the new officer moving forward through the end of the year, and then we'll handle that next year. Good. We will be doing oral interviews, uh, the end of this month, the twenty eighth, twenty ninth, thirtieth, um, the list will be back to me by the third, fifth of July, and so we'll be in a position then to, um, make our recommendations to these commissioners.
So we'll be doing the formal operation degrees in our next meeting, and that would be in plenty of time for, what, the costs to start again?
Absolutely, definitely, because if, from, from the date moving forward, it has to be a couple of weeks, um, basically what I need from you is just the authorization to go ahead, and when we get to the point where we can make the tentative offer, that can make that offer, and then by that point, we'll be, we'll be set, and you're ready to do the additional preparation. Do it, I'm comfortable with it.
Make a motion that Chief be the first to, uh, position.
Second.
All right, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Next, I'll look further.
Thank you very much, and I'll just be able to push it on, on these progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, we have letter L, uh, put enabling language. Who's going to discuss this on the floor?
So, the U D, uh, or I mean, the U D O currently does not allow any PUDs other than the two currently in the town, so essentially what this enabling language is going to do is allow PUDs in those special development areas that are already listed out, it's a plan, um, so it's just an update to the U D O to inform what our, our system is. This is just a draft at this point, um, we're going to do public notice and then have, um, planning permission letter on it next month, and then you guys will see it again.
Any questions, Mr. President?
Yes, I have another question. Uh, in reading through the ordinance text, it says that at least fifty percent of the land affected by the posts located within, is there reason that it was fifty, the larger percentage of the property had been within the context of the special development area?
It's just a least number, so, um, we're not really limiting the, the area that these PUDs are, but as you know, the PUD doesn't really, or I mean, the comprehensive plan doesn't really list out straight boundaries of any of these PUDs, so they could be smaller or larger, um, it just really kind of gets creative at that point. I understand today, but, we use this, um, enabling language from a previous town as well, too, so maybe this can center Whitestown.
Thank you. You do you have?
Thank you.
I'll be busy.
All right, up next, Mr. Parker.
Orange barrels are in place, uh, on the interchange. Um, Jason's gone, uh, but, uh, tomorrow, Sergeant, um, Cangaroo's close tomorrow is the time, and the sign will go up and the construction will essentially begin, so the orange barrels will be put in place and it starts to work. It's got a completion date is September 5th, so it's because of the summer, it'll be done by September 5th, and a lot of people got a little bit excited about this project for a long time. Um, you've already heard about, uh, the bid's going out for the water running project, and the bid opening will be June 26th, so hopefully we'll start having construction on this project sometime mid-July, late July, come August, September, October. Um, that's pretty much the, we will be doing a project, uh, Cangaroo 550 South is entirely a resurface. Um, Jason is getting quotes now, I think the quote he had, perhaps for is in the eighty thousand dollar range, just a minimal resurface, um, so he will, we'll keep you informed, it's in the, in the age budget, the regular age budget.
So just north of, uh, Park 267?
No, uh, like, west of, uh, west of Interstate 65, uh, just, just south of Park 267.